Here.
Angela Wilcox.
Here.
Barry Altshuler.
Here.
Leah Colister Lazari.
Here.
Erin Chan Ding.
Here.
Katie Karim.
Here.
Steve Wang.
Here.
Would you please rise and join us with pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. My report is up first, so good evening and welcome again. First question everybody might be asking is why are we set up this way? It's a little bit different than we normally are set up. We did this to facilitate the Working Framework 220 discussion that we'll be having between the Board and Exec Council, which is the main discussion for our meeting tonight. I also wanted to let the Board know that you heard about it in Dr. Hunt's report, but I attended the Dream Day Barrington, was a great success. So a shout out to the Education Foundation for their generous sponsorship and to Kelly Hansen for hosting Dream Day Barrington this past weekend at Station Middle School with nearly 150 middle school students. For those of you who might not be aware, Dream Day is an interactive workshop designed to introduce middle school young women to STEM, to introduce them to a variety of STEM careers. Students heard from women in STEM fields from five different corporations in this Chicagoland area and beyond. The students experienced hands-on activities highlighting the principles of activities used every day in their work. This year there was an egg drop. There was structure building, power distribution, and other activities. So it was a great event. Last week I also attended the quarterly Large District Board Presidents' Meeting with IESB. We heard from ISB Executive Director, Dr. Tom Bertrand. He talked to us about some options I thought you guys might be interested in. They're discussing for the delegate assembly, changes to how we might be doing that in the future, so stay tuned. You know, they're recognizing that those that service delegates like Steve you did this year, you know, you miss out on some of the other activities and things like that, and so they're looking at perhaps different ways to address that. I mean, he talked to us also about some bills to watch. The minimum, we've talked about some of them already, the Minimum Wage Bill, the Cash on Hand Bill, and one that's been near and dear to our hearts, you know, mandatory kindergarten even, so some interesting things there. So we also heard from State Superintendent Tony Sanders. He also talked about the importance of early childhood education. And another item I thought that was very interesting was teacher pipeline and what he is, what he's thinking about in that area. So if you want to hear more about those things, please let me know. I just want to go back to our great discussion. We live in a great school district with excellent resources. Let's show everybody today how we can work together for our students in the community to create the best implementation plan for Framework 220. So that is all I have to report. So next up is our public comment. So we have come to the portion of our meeting where we've set aside for public comment. We value your thoughts and opinions. We will ensure all voices are respected and heard in accordance with the Board Equity Statement that states we recognize, embrace, and defend the identities, abilities, and voices of our diverse school community. The Board has agreed to the following rules, which I am charged to enforce. Address the Board at the appropriate time as indicated on the agenda. Identify oneself and be brief. State your name, your elementary attendance area, or relationship to the district before you begin your comments. Your time may not be yielded to another person. Conduct yourself with respect and civility towards others and otherwise abide by Board Policy 830. Address the issues and do not attack people. The Board does want to hear your topic. It's difficult to do so when personal attacks are made, so let's please stick to the Board topics. Do not delay or impede public comment or the work of the Board. Instead of repeating comments, consider standing to show your support. And if we have disruption, we will call a break in which the Board will leave the meeting together. Reminder that this is a Board meeting that occurs in public. It is not a public meeting. Public comment is not a conversation and does not necessarily reflect the views of the Board. If comments require further attention, we will ask Dr. Hunt to follow up and report back to the Board. So with that, let me call Alexis Wormley. Am I pronouncing that right, Alexis? And we've got these two spots here reserved, and once we get into our main discussion, we'll have other people sitting there. Welcome Alexis.
Thank you. My name's Alexis Wormley, and I have three children in this district. I have a third grader, a seventh grader, and a ninth grader. We moved from the city and did quite a search as to where we were going to live. We picked Barrington far and above from anywhere else because of the people we met in that search. Secondarily, we were drawn to the school. As you know, branding is what people say when you are not in the room. Walking through the high school with my freshmen, I was of course impressed to see the wall of the famous Barrington grads. It's quite a sight. You have the famous young adult author Veronica Roth, ABC News correspondent Terry Morgan, Marianne, I'm sorry, the Boston Mayor, Michelle Yu. I personally, in addition, know many children who've gone to many prestigious schools. It's something to be proud of. But I'm concerned where this leadership is going. As we've seen the numbers, Barrington had 9,200 students in 2015, and we are now at 8,200. That's a big drop, especially when the district is spending 30% or more, and we had 10% drop in students. That's quite a burden on our taxpayers. So as Board members, I ask you, what are you doing about this? How are you holding responsible? I understand that the, I understand the district logo has, you have to be asked, you have to ask permission to use it. Why was permission granted for the political campaigns of Board Education members? I have the flyer. I reached in our mailboxes. I am now hearing that candidates are using the district logo and are smearing other Board of Education candidates, saying that they have outside interests, using outside money. Since you let these candidates use the logo, and they are receiving inside money from the district, are they receiving inside money from the district or the union? This is what I want to say. Transparency is important. Leadership is important. I have three children in sports. They keep saying, be the best you can be, be a good teammate. Is it being a good teammate when you choose to put other people down? It's absolutely not. You are greater and stronger when you choose to lift other people up. So where I struggle is when you ask for a logo that you know you're going to be granted for, that may then allow other people to think that you are being supported or endorsed. And how does that then go out into the community? How does that show our children leadership if you're doing something that's a little bit tricky behind the scenes? And furthermore, when you're doing that, what does it then tell us what you're doing behind closed doors at other times that we don't know?
Thank you Alexis.
Thank you.
Josie Kroll.
Thanks for letting me speak tonight. My name is Josie Kroll. I have three children in the district, a third grader, a sixth grader, and an eighth grader. The eighth grader is in the Chinese immersion program, and one in Countryside. I too went to Countryside School and Station and Barrington High School, so I'm a longtime resident. And tonight I'm talking about, as a Barrington area resident, I'm seeing some concerning behavior by elected members of this Board. I'm speaking tonight to bring awareness to the whole Board of these patterns as it reflects on the Board, the district, and the community. The district logo is being used for campaign materials when it is property of the district. It looks like it is being used to make it look like the school district is supporting certain candidates. The hospital mailing list was used to send letters to medical professionals, and the return address on the letter was from Advocate Medical Group, looking like the hospital is supporting certain candidates. The social media of elected officials is being censored. The public is now permitted to question, debate, or interact. Comments are being deleted and voters are being blocked. This is a violation of free speech. I am also concerned about all the talk of money and transparency. This isn't good for Barrington. Candidates are accusing others of outside influence and dark money when every evidence shows otherwise. Candidates are not willing to disclose their own financial status or in-kind contributions. I am just concerned that all this that is happening is creating more division in our community. I would love for us to have a school board where people can respectfully disagree with each other and that, and can respectfully go through this election process. Our community needs honest and open communication to heal and come together. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anita Kochar? Am I pronouncing that right, Anita?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Anita Kochar, and I have two children in the district at Barbara Rose Elementary. And I'm just coming to you with the class size problem that's been going on. In fourth grade currently, our current class size is 27 to 28 kids per class. We only have two teachers. Last year there was three, and it came down to two. We were not notified, school started, and we were almost like, where was that third teacher? That third teacher did go to, I guess, second grade or first grade because there was a, I guess, a staffing issue. Now, one of the things that we, is that are concerned is that now our third grade kids who have three teachers are now going into fourth grade. Now, are they going to go to two teachers too, or are you going to add a third teacher? Because as we know, currently, the way the two classes are going right now with 27 and 28 kids has not been working for the kids. There's been learning experiences, there's been, I wouldn't say delays, but there's been issues, let's just say. Teachers are overwhelmed, and as we know, smaller class sizes represent that teachers are going to have more flexibility in learning approaches. Overall, children will flourish, and it's a win-win for everybody. The teachers will be happy, the parents will be happy, that's what we strive for, right? In a district like this, is that we want our children to flourish in class sizes. So when there's a smaller class sizes, we see our children will flourish. So I would say that the way that it's happening, it's struggling, and we just want more flexibility. It's a win-win for everybody. And overall, we just don't want our teachers to be overwhelmed. We want them to have the opportunities that the other classes do have and the other grades do have. So we're just more concerned with the third and fourth grades right now, but I'm sure there's other grades as well at Rose as well, and specifically Barbara Rose. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Namrata Shah.
Hi, my name is Namrata Shah, and I have a third grader and a fourth grader at Barbara Rose. I have a similar concern to what Anita just mentioned about the class sizes at Rose, and also specifically what is the long-term plan for Rose? Because as we know, there's space issues, there's staff issues, we don't get enough aides, and this is across all grades at Barbara Rose. Also, what are we doing about spacing in terms of, there are additional programs at Rose, but the homeschool staff, spacing is being affected right now. So what is the long-term plan for Rose specifically? And then I also had another concern about buses. This year, my kids have had to be on the bus for more than 15 minutes, and we live within a mile of Rose. It takes me exactly six minutes to drop them to school in the morning because we never make the bus. But on the way back, they take over 50 to 55 minutes to get home, and this is not fair to an elementary student. Also, I think more than a couple of routes are consolidated and made into one, so they are like having more stops than usual. There's a lot of kids on the bus, they don't have space even to sit. My older one does cello, and on Mondays, it's hard for him to even put his cello on the bus. There's no space for him to sit, forget about his cello, so I have to pick him up. There's no option in that. So I'm hoping that next year we have a better situation with the buses. Thank you.
Thank you. Roger Hutchison.
I'm Roger Hutchison. I have three children that have been educated in the district, one still in high school and two in college. Proud to report, or happy to report, that the two in college are very well-prepared and have been able to succeed based upon their 13 years of education in this district. I have been to past meetings over the years, 15 years now, and I've witnessed many very thoughtful discussions regarding fiscal responsibility, and I'm in support of the past decisions of the Board, particularly during the past four years when they're faced with such a dilemma. I'm very proud of how everything was handled. My two children in college have not suffered at all from the fact that they were both here during the pandemic. In regards to the social issues that I've seen as I watch the meetings, I'm very dismayed that it appears that a vocal minority is hijacking much of the discourse regarding the curriculum and education of our students. I also come to learn that the outside influence has increased like nothing I've ever witnessed while a parent in this district. And I'd ask the Board to consider that when making decisions. I hope that the voters keep in mind that the Board has done a wonderful job, and I would argue that the majority of the public in Barrington is in support of the Board. I respect the right of the, all opinions to be voiced at the Board meetings, but in the end, I'd ask that you consider that the Board has done a wonderful job and that we should maintain and continue in the path that we're on. So thank you.
Emily Sheedy. I have three kids that graduated from the district and are very happy and doing quite well, so thank you to District 220. I have a few comments about the election, about the school board and how they're being, the elections and how they're being run. I see two methods of campaigning. One is the community seems to get involved because they have a vested interest in how our schools perform. It affects things that are personal to our families, our children, our home values, grassroots style campaigning, local. The other new method of campaigning is getting financial aid and training by an outside political action committee of some sort. Donations and training coming from people and groups outside of Barrington 220. As an example, Gary Rabin was a gubernatorial candidate in Illinois. He lives in McHenry, and he and his PAC donated $6,000 to a group of candidates for our school board. This group of candidates has raised $55,000 for a local school board election. This is unprecedented. The other side has earned or raised maybe a little more than a tenth of that. Now, unprecedented, school board, local election. Here are my questions. What interest do these outside donors have in our school district? Our performance does not affect their children or their property values. So why are they donating so much money to our elections? Just imagine if they donated $55,000 to our district and we could do with it whatever we could to help our children. Why aren't they doing that if they care so much about our children? So just a thought. If they, you know, it's just curious as to their motivation, as to why they are giving so much money. Is it in the best interest of Barrington 220 to have outside donors running our elections? These people have no vested interest in how we live our lives and how we run our community. So why are they giving so much money? And training, it's unusual that there's training going on with candidates for a school board election. It's not against the law, but to me, it seems suspicious and it seems wrong. And I, you know, I'm very proud of this district, and I think I'd like to protect it, and...
Thank you, Emily. We have to call the next speaker. Stephanie Walker.
Hi. Thanks for letting me speak. I've spoken before, so I'll just reiterate quickly. I grew up in this district. I graduated from Barrington High School in 1993, and my kids are in the district now, a third grader at Roslin, and I have a seventh grader at Prairie. We came from Los Angeles in 2020, and it was a big change for them. It was a big change for us as parents, and, you know, coming from a really diverse area back to Barrington, which my, in my experience growing up, it wasn't nearly as diverse as Los Angeles. So I just want to reiterate what I am very, what I appreciate about this district, and I thought it was a good time to do it because changes may be approaching, while we definitely know, because we have a change of superintendent coming, and I just wanted to voice what I love, what I hope continues to be the focus of our school district. One thing that is really important that I'm so appreciative of is social emotional learning. I have one child who has autism and another, or ADHD, and another who is a straight A student and is in accelerated math. So I appreciate that both of these kids have a place and are being, are, they're doing really well in the district. And today, a quick example, I just want to shout out the OT teacher at Roslin that works with my little one. He, she recognized when he was supposed to go to OT that he really wanted to go with his class to kindergarten and read to the kindergartners because that's something that they do, and she could see the tears in his eyes and recognize like, okay, this child is not going to be served by me taking him to OT, and instead, you know, let him go with his class. And she called me to make sure that was okay as per IEP rules and everything. But to me, that's an example of the success of social emotional training, learning, training through all the teachers to recognize a child's emotional need in that moment, because I promise you, there would have been a huge meltdown if she had tried to pull him into OT. So I just want to applaud that. I'm so grateful for it, and I hope that focus continues. Another thing I care about is, like I said, diversity, equity, and inclusion in the district, and I hope that that continues to be even more threaded throughout. It's important to me as a human being and the way we raise our kids, but it's also important as I'm a Realtor, and that does affect property values because equity is actually a score on GreatSchools.org for our district. And if you look at the different schools, and at least in Roslin and Prairie, equity is one where work needs to be done. So I just want to emphasize that and hope that, that we do as a district continue to do that work because it is something that's being looked at, not just on Great Schools, but also at the state level as well for our schools, and that directly, in my experience as Realtor, affects property values. So I just want to keep this district a... So I just want to keep this district a destination district and applaud what you do because I know it's been hard lately and I understand that the district office here has been getting some harassing phone calls and just, I hope that stops and thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Rachel Forsythe, sir. Rachel?
My name is Rachel Forsythe. I have two boys who graduated from the high school and a girl who is a freshman at the high school now. Like Josie Kroll, I have concerns about transparency. I was very disappointed and annoyed recently when an anonymous group decided to spread misinformation and stoke fear over the book called Gender Queer. I feel compelled to speak out against banning books once again. As President Dwight Eisenhower said, he's nobody's idea of a switchy, woke, uber-liberal. He said it best when Senator McCarthy was rounding up communists and burning books in the 1950s. Don't join the book burners. Don't think you're going to conceal faults by concealing evidence that they ever existed. Don't be afraid to go in your library and read every book, as long as that document does not offend our own ideas of decency. That should be the only censorship. And then he goes on. And we've got to fight it with something better, not try to conceal the thinking of our own people. They are part of America and even if they think ideas that are contrary to ours, their right to say them, their right to record them, and their right to have them at places where they are accessible to others is unquestioned or isn't America. So, a mailing went out recently by some group called Committee to Protect 220 Students. And I don't know who they are and I haven't been able to find them on the internet and I pretty much do get by design. Penn America, one of the leading organizations for free speech since 1922, identified 50 groups recently that have led the charge to ban books at the national and state and local levels. This includes Moms for Liberty, which started in Florida, which is now the number two state for book bans. And the group has 200 chapters, including one here in Lake County. To give you an idea of what they are about, Marjorie Taylor Greene was their keynote speaker last year. According to Penn America, this group has been linked directly to 20% of the book bans enacted in the last school year. The Moms for Liberty group here in Barrington has several members who are involved with the suburban action PAC, both as supporters and as candidates this coming election. If Barrington is to remain a top-notch education district, we must focus on keeping award-winning books in our schools and extremists out of our library and school boards. Thank you.
And we will jump to the hearing that's to occur at 7:30. We're just a little bit off time here, but I thought it important to finish up the public comment before we move to that.
The great grandpa had a change to spell phonetically, but it doesn't always work out that well.
I just can't read is my problem.
Oh, that's right. My E's aren't that great. Anyway, Todd Chalene, 30-year district member of Huff Street School, very proud of it. And I have to say, when we first moved to Barrington, we moved here because it was very close walking distance to the metro station. And my sister-in-law, who was an executive director of a preschool in Glenview, said, "So, how were the schools?" And we're like, "Well, they have them." So, but we've been very fortunate and two children who have graduated from Barrington High School, went going all the way through Huff and all that and Station Middle School. It's interesting is we're three houses in from 14 on Washington Street and the bus would take 45 minutes for my son to get and children to get there. So it was a long bus ride and we were pretty close to Huff Street, but they did pretty well. So anyway, I'm very pleased and I just mostly wanted to say I really appreciate all that you do as a board and as employees of this district. And as a person who does a lot of volunteering, I understand what it means to be a volunteer and I really appreciate all that you have done for our community. And I just wanted to voice that. So, thank you.
I was just going to go in the hearing. Dr. Hunt, could you just, as part of your report, or now just address money going to I also heard blocking of voters on our Facebook page. I don't know if you can address it now or if you can follow up? And just to remind the community that the school board does not run the elections.
Well, I'm not sure those were directed at the school district.
I just want to make sure it's clear.
I guess, let me be clear. It's our roles, especially when we sit in these seats, to be bipartisan as we approach an election. It's been, I think, very challenging for our administration to balance the current atmosphere that's going, you know, on with the election. We have nothing to do with soliciting funds, taking funds, distributing funds for elections. We also, I don't believe, have added any blocks to any of our social medias regarding election. In fact, we try very hard to stay out of the election. I think we'll talk policy later, but I might as well just address this now. While we're talking about the sign and logo comments that came up. We did have a request by multiple board members or current board members and those running for board requested use of our logo. They were granted permission to utilize that logo, which was then brought to my attention. I consulted legal counsel on how to address this issue because it was broader than one isolated incident. A couple of pieces of information, our logo has been used in the past in this regard. It's being used currently by businesses. The guidance from our legal was, one, improve your approval process because essentially it was a Google Doc that you asked for permission and were granted. That we obtain information on the reason for utilization of the logo and we track when we approve it. That system has been put in place based on the recommendation of legal counsel. The second one was to ask our policy committee to review any policies related to the logo and use of the logo. The policy committee has done that work. In fact, one of the recommended changes that will come forward tonight is in regards to that. And then the last was to pursue a trademark for the logo, which we have at least reached out to start the conversation with legal to get that done. So those three items were asked of us and we are kind of moving towards those. So, both current candidates that are, have requested use were granted and also informed that this will not be granted in future elections when we have these, all of these things. Like I wanted to address that as well.
All right. So do we have a motion to go into the public hearing regarding the honorable dismissal of probationary teachers pursuant to Section 24.12 of the Illinois School Code?
So moved.
Second.
Do we need the roll call here?
Sandra Bradford?
Yes.
Leah Colister-Lazari?
Yes.
Angela Wilcox?
Yes.
Steve Wang?
Yes.
Katie Carum?
Yes.
Erin Chan Ding?
Yes.
Barry Altshuler?
Yes.
Okay, so we are in public hearing. Is there, we did not have a separate sign-up sheet. Is there anyone here that wanted to address the board on this topic? Hearing and seeing none, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second. Okay, roll call, please.
Barry Altshuler?
Yes.
Leah Colister-Lazari?
Yes.
Katie Carum?
Yes.
Erin Chan Ding?
Yes.
Sandra Bradford?
Yes.
Steve Wang?
Yes.
Angela Wilcox?
Yes.
Hearing is closed. So, Dr. Hunt, let's go, thank you again for addressing those issues with public comment. And let's go into your report.
Sure. I'm sorry. I just want to kind of go back to the public comment for a quick second, understanding that this is not a discussion.
A dialogue.
Understand. However, most of the folks who spoke are still here. Can I just make a comment and say that if there's questions about what board members are doing, I think it's reasonable to say...
Question about what?
What board members are doing. I think it's reasonable to email the board members. Is that fair to say?
Yeah.
I think that should happen because clearly there are a lot of questions proposed and I would welcome it, quite frankly, and I'm sure the rest of the board would as well. I think we need to address some of these things and I think we as a board are totally on board with taking that on.
And I do think it's the best way to communicate with board members is through our board email addresses.
Yep. Thank you. Sorry about that interruption.
Good points. Good points. Thank you. All right, Dr. Hunt.
Okay, thank you. Couple of, just updates this evening. One, I want to let you know that every five years, Lake County conducts an audit of our organization. And this is one of the things that doesn't necessarily fall in a job description. It kind of is appointed to, all hands on deck when it comes, every five years. I want to let you know that we have completed our audit. We got our first results today, actually, right? On the P D. So that is trending very well. I want to recognize Dr. Byrne, Dr. Leswicki, Mrs. Reiki, and Jordan Anderson. I can't tell you how many hours have gone into getting this work done. And I am very confident in sharing that it's done and will be okay, just based on the quality of the individuals that took charge of it. So just wanted to publicly thank and recognize all of those folks for their work. I want to draw to the board's attention, we did put a link on our website. It's under the "Our District" tab and if you go to the "About" section and under "Resources", it's an opportunity for us to share the information regarding student achievement that we presented to the board back in the fall. And we'll continue to do that throughout, you know, as results come in. It's just a real easy and manageable way for our public to see our state test results and we'll continue to build this out, kind of just in an effort of transparency, sharing different information. So as you saw, we had IRA data that we shared earlier in the fall. This is comparison IRA data in terms of other large unit districts. But it's, you know, the rationale is to be as transparent as we can with student achievement and just give another avenue for us to push that information out to our public. You kind of stole my thunder on this one.
Sorry. I was just so excited.
I will just speak as a parent this time. I had the opportunity to attend the STEM night with my son at Grove Elementary School. And I think everybody should take the time to go to one of these events and see how engaging the opportunities are for our young people. I know the Education Foundation needs to be recognized for their support of integration of STEM education. This is one of those things that you don't have to do it. It doesn't fall in the school day. There's countless hours of staff work behind the scenes to make this thing come to life. And, you know, if you look at impact, I have the luxury of being able to walk down the street to our home and walking back with my son, all he could talk about was problem-solving the things that we did at STEM night. So I just want to recognize and thank parent volunteers, staff for the incredible evening for our students. Also want to highlight a few of our, one of our board members as well as a few of our staff members. ASBO International puts out a magazine once a month? Dr. Byne?
It's almost once a month.
And it goes throughout our nation and actually internationally into Canada as well. And the latest issue actually has three articles written and connected to Barrington 220. We've got Jen Prindl, who wrote an article on the retrospective on the auditing of public school funds. Erin Chan Ding, tips for orienting your school board. And Dr. Byne as well, what do you do with historical records? So, I bring this to you, one, to just highlight the efforts and work and kind of going above and beyond, but recognizing that this district is one that people look to for information, advice, and put us in situations where we can share that and appreciate the efforts of all those involved in that. Also, if you did not catch, Forbes released their 30 for under 30, which included a, four of our, four, five, four of our graduates, Olivia Chang, art and style, 2018 grad, Mack Mazziski and Owen Prunkus, and graduate of 2011, and Ashley Ward, a 2013 grad. So, to someone's point, who was walking through the halls and seeing the tremendous graduates and the things they're going on, there's a group in 30 or under coming right after to continue to fill all those walls. So I wanted to point that out to the Board of Education.
Awesome. Awesome.
And lastly, just a reminder to the board, we had to reschedule our tours of various fine arts centers due to weather. We do have that scheduled for April 20th and I believe more details and information will be pushed out by Dr. Byne. And I'm open to any questions or comments. If there are none, that would conclude my report.
It's pretty quiet. All right, let's move...
Just to piggyback something, you talked about the Forbes. Last year, we had two. So in two years, we've had six, which is pretty impressive.
Very impressive. Very impressive. Okay, informational reports. Does anyone have any questions about the FOIA report? All right, then let's move to our board committee reports. Policy's been busy. We've got a couple of policies pursuing and some action. Finish off the policy from last week.
The Equity Teamet, and we had a really good meeting. We talked about some of the framework work and what's happening, some of the strategic priorities, inclusive education and what the objectives are. We also talked about some opportunities for the community to get engaged, some parent university coming in the future, and also opportunities for parent advisory groups to get involved. So, yeah, and talked about how there are equity teams at each of the schools and how the progress is being made. So it was a really good meeting.
So I think we acknowledge, we all know that, a lot of us know that March is Women's History Month and also Irish-American Heritage Month. But April, we won't see each other again until April, is Arab-American Heritage Month. Yeah, I know. The Carum family represented. So, yeah, so just heads up that there are resources for these different months and the origins and how to celebrate on our Equity 220 website that is linked to our main website. So, check that out.
Any other committees?
The referendum committee met on the 9th. And as everybody knows, we've officially opened Countryside. The addition is done and we had our ribbon cutting. And Huff's ribbon cutting is coming up right after spring break, but the walkthrough's been done and occupancy has been allowed and they're slowly kind of moving in and using those spaces. And I think Huff's is the most impressive because it's such a small school, a couple extra spaces makes a huge difference in terms of how they're, you know, accessing space. I think people have also noticed, especially if you have kids in the high school, that the outdoor fields are open for play. On the 15th, we had both baseball and softball, had their inaugural events, and the 18th, lacrosse, had their event. And as everybody knows, the surrounding areas still need work. So we want everyone's patience and everyone be very careful when you do go to cheer on our students. Obviously, the weather has had an effect on, you know, getting the final work done. But the multi-sport field is usable and it's a godsend to our, both gym classes and to our players. So, BHS interior, as most people know, is just starting. We're just kind of getting it off the ground. And the first place we're starting is on the PE spaces. The gym and demolitions in process. The gymnastics gym, unfortunately, we found there's some unexpected abatement needed. So that may slow things down just a little bit. It should not increase our costs appreciably because we do have contingency funds, but that may slow things down a bit. But in the high school now, it's going to be like dominoes falling. We're going to kind of get one area ready and then we're going to have to move people and then get another area ready. And between now and the summer, we're starting some of the work. Whatever can be done without disrupting our students is being started and we will obviously really go big time once school ends. As everybody knows, we're not doing any of the academic summer school at Barrington High School. We're doing it at the middle school. And then, as has already been mentioned, we're really actively excited and actively looking at the Fine and Performing Arts Center. Data collection is in process. We definitely want to get community feedback and student feedback and we have a lot of, you know, collaboration now to really get not only the community excited, but to get everybody's input. So we make sure that this is something that the community wants and can use. So that's, you know, more to come on that, but that's what's... So that's, you know, more, more to come on that. But that's what's, that's what's in the near future now.
Excellent. Thank you, Barry. Any questions on referendum?
This committee didn't meet, but I just want to congratulate our finance department again on the meritorious budget award, because I think it's so awesome. And we are one of 11 districts in Illinois and only 100 nationwide, so.
Thank you again, Dr. Byne and team. Okay. Are we ready to move to consent agenda? Any other reports? Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Anybody have any questions or comments? I will read through everything that's on the consent agenda before you vote. Any comments or questions? All right, let me read through what's on there. And if you guys think of anything, just holler. We have minutes from March 7th, both open and closed. We have about eight finance reports, the board report, February reports for exception bills, NSLP exception bills, activity accounts for BHS and K through eight, Treasurers report, revenues and expenditures, and then March reports for the bill list and the NSLP bill list. We have a revised personnel report. We have the approval of the IHSA membership, which is an annual renewal that we do to participate in the Illinois High School Association membership. And we have minor policies. There's two of them, or just one of them, excuse me. Policy 5, 320 on evaluation had a minor edit. And last, we have the declaration of property surplus and authorizing its sale or disposal. Any questions?
I'm just wondering, why was 20 on twice? Did we just?
One has an edit and one didn't have the edit.
Okay.
So it's the same policy?
It's the same thing. Okay.
It would just shows you where the edit was? It was just a minor?
I didn't know if there was something else we were looking at. Okay.
There's nothing. I wasn't on policy, so nothing else? Okay.
Exactly right. It's just one so you could see where the change occurred, then the clean since we're approving it tonight.
Roll call.
Leah Colister Lazari?
Yes.
Barry Altshuler?
Yes.
Angela Wilcox?
Yes.
Erin Chan Ding?
Yes.
Sandra Bradford?
Yes.
Katie Carum?
Yes.
Steve Wang?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Let's move into our action items, then. We have second reading of board policy on the school year calendar and day, 620. Do we have a motion to approve as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we've talked about this now, I think, in two other meetings and held a, held a public hearing even on this one. Is there anything else anybody wants to reiterate or comment on this policy? All right, let's do a roll call.
Erin Chan Ding?
Yes.
Sandra Bradford?
Yes.
Katie Carum?
Yes.
Angela Wilcox?
Yes.
Barry Altshuler?
Yes.
Steve Wang?
Yes.
Leah Colister Lazari?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. It's also the time of year to do our reductions. So do we have a motion to consider to approve the resolution authorizing the honorable dismissal due to reduction in force of part-time and full-time probationary teachers? Maybe, Dr. Hunt, I should ask you to give us a quick overview of?
Yeah, so this is an annual action by the Board of Education. We do this to ensure that we take appropriate legal measures to reduce force or reduce our staff, and then begin to recall people off of this list as staffing is needed. And I think, you know, probably next meeting, board, you'll start to see that enrollment sheet show up at your desk, and we'll start to talk through class sizes and where they fall. So this is an annual process that we go through to make sure that the district is running as efficiently as possible, or staffing based on our enrollment as it moves forward. Recall can happen from now all the way until, you know, through August. I do apologize, I wanted to address the class size, you know, comments as well. I might as well do them here. Part of what happened there was late enrollments into the district. We've had to, we've been trying to hire and put additional staff and support in those rooms. We just have not been able to fill the spot. When we look at rolling those classes forward, we're well aware of that bubble, and you'll see that on the enrollment sheets as you get them coming forward. And then lastly, I know there's a communication that's being worked on currently that will go out to the parents at Rose to let them know.
Looks here anymore, so.
Those parents will get the communication.
Excellent. All right, should we do a roll call?
Katie Carum? Sandra Bradford?
Yes.
Erin Chan Ding?
Yes.
Steve Wang?
Yes.
Leah Colister Lazari?
Yes.
Angela Wilcox?
Yes.
Barry Altshuler?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Motion passes. The next action item I don't think is necessary at this time. Is that correct, Trish? Okay, so we will move to action item 6.04. Is there a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the non-renewal of non-tenured teacher other than the final-year probationary teacher?
Second.
Okay. Any other comments we need to make here? I don't think so, but.
No, I think this completes the non-renewal process. We're recommending to the board to approve this resolution to move it forward.
Roll call.
Katie Carum? Angela Wilcox?
Yes.
Sandra Bradford?
Yes.
Erin Chan Ding?
Yes.
Steve Wang?
Yes.
Leah Colister Lazari?
Yes.
Barry Altshuler?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. So let's move on to our last action item of the evening, which is consideration to approve the organizational board meeting on May 2nd, 2023. Do we have a motion to do so?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so we have, we had this on our, on our last agenda, and we knew we didn't have everyone available. I believe that, that this is the only timeframe that we've got, all seven of us, to be able to hold this organizational board meeting, would be the morning of May 2nd. So I wanted to.
I can't be there.
Work?
Yeah. So I don't, I mean, I was trying to move, I have a client meeting downtown on May 1st. I was trying to move it. And then I heard that now we're moving it. Like, what, why are we moving our meeting?
The meeting is not established, right? We've only established meetings through this board's tenure. And so every year, it's in our policy, we have to approve or set, set the date for this organizational meeting in March. So there's nothing on the calendars.
But it's always the first Tuesday night.
Yeah, actually, it wasn't. When we were put in, it was the last Tuesday in April. I mean, you know, so no, it isn't that.
But I think the issue is it was changed without, for the direction of perhaps one individual, without talking to everyone. I moved my entire family's trip in order to be back here for the night of the first, which now I did not need to do. I incurred fees. I, I, I'm having my children be on, get up at 3:30 in the morning to get on a flight. And now it's not even happening. It's being moved again. I mean, this is the third time. I don't, like, who's deciding when all these changes happen?
I, I think you need poll people. And as of a month ago, or as of two weeks ago, you know, May 1st looked good. And then now someone said, no, May 1st doesn't work good. And then we said, okay, May 2nd looks good. No, now May 2nd doesn't look good. It's just, so, you know, I, I'll say I'm the guilty party because I am not available on May 2nd at night. But I mentioned that months ago to people. And we were said, you know, we were told, well, wait till March, and then we'll deal with it. So, you know, so I, I'm, I'm the guilty party that can't make it on May 2nd at night. So when we have it is, is, you know, up to the board here.
So, Angel, I'm sorry. I didn't understand. So you're available Monday or you're not available Monday?
Well, I'm actually not available either, but I have to be downtown on Tuesday.
Sure.
And so I was gonna see if I could get someone to cover this meeting with a client downtown on Monday night. So initially, I said, I can't, you know, I have a meeting in the city. I've got a client come in from San Francisco. I take advantage of that. So when it was on the agenda last time, you know, I heard it, and I was like, I can't do that. And then.
That's why I asked Janine to pull the whole board. And I guess we didn't hear back, so.
So is May 1st okay with you? Let's go around. May 1st okay with you?
It's really hard.
No, I just wanted to go around.
It's really hard.
I mean, I.
Is there any way, since you're away on business, or can you dial in on the morning of May 2nd? I don't know what time your meetings start.
That's my last meeting. I wanted to be here.
I wanted to be here, too.
I, I want everybody to be there, too.
You know, I've done this for eight years. I was really, you know, kind of looking forward to.
Say goodbye.
Yeah, absolutely.
Can we separate the organizational meeting from Angela's goodbye meeting? Like, could we have Angela's goodbye meeting at the last Tuesday?
I don't want to make, I hate making extra meetings. It's just.
No, no, we don't have to have an extra meeting, but we could spend time at our April, I'm gonna get the date wrong, April 18th?
18th.
18th meeting. We could, every year, we have a recognition for the community that's listening. We have a recognition of, of board members that are, are moving off. So we could, we could add that to our April 18th agenda so that you wouldn't have to miss that, Angela.
We're not even taking into account, we know we, at best, we're going to have one new board member. I mean, this is, it seems strange to be setting a meeting without even knowing the schedules of everyone who'll be attending the meeting.
Yeah, by our policy, we have to set the, we have to set the meeting. So we've got to set it. We've got to set sometime at this meeting tonight.
The policy says set it in March for the May meeting, so.
Right.
I'm sorry.
Can we amend it later?
I assume we can amend it later. So if we could set it tonight, and then if we, we could poll again.
I mean, I'd like to be here.
I'd like you to be here for.
We all, I thought, I thought we had, it was going to be fine because we had heard, I thought we'd heard from, I forgot that we hadn't heard from you, but.
Can, can we, can we stick with the May? I mean, I think I could move, at least I could get my partner to cover a meeting for me instead of, like, missing actual work.
I cannot be here on May 1st at all, unless it's midnight. Like, midnight on May 2nd.
Okay, I, I'm not, but I'm sorry. Why was I told to change an entire trip if we knew that two, like, two people could be, I mean, maybe didn't know Angela couldn't be here. But this is, this is a little, I'm not trying to port blame on anyone, but this is crazy.
When we put dates, we've got to get back to our administration and help us all out. So I don't think that, I think that we've got to do that. So I don't even think we have a motion on the table yet, right? Did I put, did I put a motion on the table?
Do it the first and the second.
All right. So the motion right now is for May 2nd. Do we, do we need to make?
We can draw the motion, or, I mean, you know, we can defer that.
We can, we can amend it, or we can approve it as it is. I don't remember who did the, you got, who did the first and the second?
Leah Colister Lazari and Erin Chan Ding.
I'm happy to amend to whatever makes sense.
Yeah, ditto.
Ideally, we have some window where we could all be here.
So it has to be in May? No.
It has to be between, help me out here.
There's a variety of.
April 25th.
Craig, do you have the number of days?
It's following the election and after the authority came, first and no later than 40 days. So that's the window that we'll try.
So it's April 25th?
Through May 15th.
Through May 15th.
So can we do it later in May?
We have issues with not all board members being present. So could, how about if you throw out this as an idea? Could we approve it for either the 2nd or the 1st? We could approve it for the evening of the 1st. And, and then we can continue to poll and see if there's any other conflicts. I don't think there's an other time in that, in that window of days that I've heard that every single one of the seven of us is available.
So not the 9th or the 16th, the following Tuesdays?
Evening of the 1st or the, the morning of the 2nd.
Okay.
Is, is the 16th too late in that 40-day period? Can we do it on? It's too late, okay.
Can we amend the policy? Is it a policy or a law?
State law.
So you amend the law?
The absolute last day is May 15th, right?
Correct.
Okay, well, look, we'll figure it out, okay? It's not, so, yeah, whatever, whatever date you want to put up. And, yeah, I was traveling last weekend. I was at college visits, so I was out and about. But remind me again, just what are the, what are the windows again? April, April? I think, I think the date and the time that we have everybody in the state of Illinois, maybe, I guess, I don't even know where people are traveling or whatever, but is the morning of May 2nd. But you've got a meeting that morning, right?
What time, though? What time would you want on?
We could, I'm gonna ask, what's 8:00 AM?
8:00 AM, 9:00 AM.
I could do 3:00 AM if you wanted, as long as it's.
Let's not do 3:00. We have to make it accessible to the public.
Yeah, that's not. 6:00 AM or 8:00 AM. Anytime on May 2nd.
Yeah, maybe if we did early, like, 8:00 AM.
7:30, does that make it better? I'm looking at everybody here.
Is it just? I can do anytime.
So this meeting is just, we.
Actually, two meetings, right?
Yeah.
It's two meetings, but I won't get this stuck up on.
We probably have a little bit of disconnect. Minimally, the, the board will have to approve the election results.
Correct.
And then.
That's the next one, for sure.
Yep. And then at the next meeting, we would swear new board members in. And the board would then do their organizational meeting.
All right. Yeah, let's just say 8:00 AM then.
8:00 AM on the 2nd? So that's what the motion was, was we're meeting on May 2nd. So let's, is it okay if we amend the motion to say 7:30 so that it's very clear?
Or 8 o'clock?
Oh, I'm sorry. 8 o'clock you said, right? Sorry, I'm listening. Thank you for checking on me. 8:00 AM on, on May 2nd?
You will check with Leah and Erin if they would amend it to 8:00 on May 2nd?
Yes.
8:00 AM.
That's fine with me. 8:00 AM, May 2nd.
All right, should we do a roll call quick?
Steve Wang?
Yes.
Leah Colister Lazari?
Yes.
Angela Wilcox?
Yes.
Sandra Bradford?
Yes, and I just want to recognize, thank you to the board members for everybody accommodating this time.
Erin Chan Ding?
Yes.
Barry Altshuler?
Yes.
Katie Carum?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. All right, let's, thank you, board. Let's move on to our discussion items. We have first reading of board policy. We've got two policies we need to read through. Let's start with 2 colon 220, Board of Education Meeting Procedure. This is, you want to talk to this?
So sometimes we have policies that come from our press and protection service to make sure that we're staying in compliance with the laws. And sometimes we discuss things locally. The two policies tonight were things that came to policy committee for us to discuss. The first one, 2 colon 220, Board of Education Meeting Procedure. This one was discussed in board policy. And if you look at, I believe it's the beginning of page four of five, specifically the conversation that occurred during policy committee. The thing that we delineate is if policy language changes come from policy committee, they're highlighted in, in blue. You'll see that we've added with the three permissible areas concerning when someone may participate by video or audio conference. One, if personal illness or disability. Two, employment or district business. And three, a family or other emergency. We expanded the language of option two, employment or district business by adding that requires the board member to be absent on the day of the board meeting. So that was what was one of the discussion items. And the second piece was just, this is more in practice. The policy previously read, if an individual is in this situation, to notify the superintendent and the recording secretary. We changed the recording secretary to board president. So that if someone is in this situation, they will let the board president and the superintendent know. And then therefore, by making that change, we struck the next sentence that spoke to the recording secretary requirements. So that's where we landed. And Angela and Erin, please feel free to jump in.
Yeah, I think, well, we had reached out to our council and asked for clarity as far as, and I can't remember the exact example, but I think it was, it was always San Francisco was our discussion. So.
I'm not sure why.
Right. So if, you know, if, if I go to San Francisco for a meeting on Monday, and then I stay in San Francisco on Tuesday because, you know, I'm gonna go up to Napa on Wednesday or whatever, I, that is, that does not constitute calling in, a permissible time to call in to a board meeting on that Tuesday. If, if the board meeting was on Monday, then it would constitute it.
Let me ask you this. What if your meeting is Wednesday morning? So you're going to San Francisco Tuesday night? Can you, does that?
Yeah, so we, so we, we did discuss that situation, not identically, but something really similar to that. And so the way that we originally worded this was employment or district business on that day. And so then we decided that it was more clear if it said, if, now it says that requires the board member to be absent on that day. So, yeah, if you need to travel the night before. to be absent on that day. So, yeah, if you need to travel the night before, and you're going to get into your hotel at five, and, you know, you can still call in, then that makes sense. But it was just, you know, kind of, what about that downtime? And, you know, if, if, um, you know, if you wanted to go to Vegas early for, you know, your conference or whatever like that, then it didn't count as it. So we, um, tried to clarify the language. We ran it by our attorney, and they said that this was an appropriate, um, interpretation and recitation of the Open Meetings Act and how we should be interpreting it as a board. So to be clear, this is always how it should have been interpreted. We just didn't have that language in there. Yeah, nothing has changed as far as the law. It was just that our policy, uh, I think is just kind of the standard policy per press, but because there were questions, we wanted to make it crystal clear, and, you know, we'd already gone to the attorney and asked their opinion, and so we just, or we, so what their advice was, and we put it in the policy.
So the blue is our clarification. Like, not every district will have that, right? So that's, that's what we put in.
You're clarifying what was already established.
What to means. And this, it's the spirit of, oh, yeah, you're going primarily for work. And so the other example we had was, what if you're at a conference, and the conference goes Monday through Friday, but the conference isn't Tuesday, the day of the board meeting, but you have to be there anyway, and that's why we use the verb required, because you're required to be there. So it doesn't make sense to, like, fly back and forth. You should be able to call in. So it's really, I mean, I think it does come down to trust and discretion is, is the spirit, is your intent to, like, go on a vacation and, oh, I'm just going to stick a day here in my vacation so I can call in, or, of work, I mean, or is the majority of your time away required because of work? And so that, I think, is what we landed on, especially based on, on legal, if that makes sense.
But it wasn't just majority. It was like, if, you know, even if you're gone for eight days, and two of your days are fun time, but you call in on those days, it still was, like, you would have to be required to be out of work for.
Right, you're required, so that would be an okay.
Out of office for work, yeah.
Okay, time to call, yeah.
My only concern is that we don't want to, it's a bit more, it could be interpreted as more restrictive than the law, but maybe not, because every scenario I could think of in my head, I would say, oh, that requires you to, you know, if you have to take the cheapest flight, that's still a requirement of your business to, you know, to, um, travel on whatever days. And every scenario I could think of, I, it seemed like this would work. Um, I just want to, I mean, there's some times where we have emergency situations, and we might have to have more than four people to vote, or, you know, at least have a quorum. So, um, well, we can't have a quorum. A quorum has to be four people physically present, but I just am worried about when we might need more than the majority of the board to vote. Uh, but again, I guess I'd have to say, let's just say, you went to San Francisco and you stayed enough, uh, an extra day, I don't know, um, and we need board members to vote. I don't, I guess I don't know what we would do in that kind of scenario. Maybe we'd wait till Wednesday morning to have the meeting, I don't know.
Well, I mean, last month, we canceled the meeting when we didn't have enough board members.
But that was even just, not even have a quorum, yeah. I mean, it could.
I mean, that's the policy. Like, if you're on a trip, you're on a trip. Can't call in. Yeah, and it's the law. I mean, you know, it's not like we're expanding the law or anything, so, yeah, I mean, it's like what we just talked about here. You know, trying to figure out a day when everyone could be available. I mean, it's not convenient for everyone. It's not, but, you know, we have to follow the law, so.
Yeah, but I, I think the attorneys said this goes beyond the law.
It's more restrictive than the law. It could be interpreted as that.
More restricted than what, oh, I.
No, they said that when we put, when we did the first draft where it said have to be out on, on that day, that that was, and they didn't say it was, would go beyond the law, it said that that could be interpreted as, like Barry's scenario. Like, I have to fly out, I have a meeting at eight AM on Wednesday, I have to fly out on Tuesday night. Right, so. There's obviously exceptions to. Yeah, it was, so this was not beyond the law. This was to, to further explain what the intention of the legislation is. Okay.
So, so I have two comments about this. And I, I know that there's some community distrust of the board, and we all have ulterior motives, but I think we have to trust each other to follow this. Absolutely. I'm not saying we have to break any rules, but that if somebody says, I am on business, we don't have to prove it with receipts and, and those kind of ledger items, and, you know, we have to trust each other on this. And yes, we need to follow the rules. I'm not suggesting that we have to, have to break the rules. Um, but, but I also want to applaud board members who are off on business and want to still be involved in board business. I, I think it's great that, you know, we have dedicated board members who say, you know what, I can't physically be here, but I want to be involved in the board decisions. And, and so, you know, I just think we also want to make sure that, that we make it as easy as we can for board members who are gone on business to stay involved with the board business, so.
I think this does do that.
Yes.
This does do that.
I'm just, he has a statement for the.
I hear you.
For the community.
I just, I'm, I'm triple checking to find if there's any reason. I, I couldn't think of anything that, that this wouldn't allow, you know, board member to dial in.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see any scenario where this would offset the purpose of the law. But, you know, I do think that, and I agree, trust is number one. We talked about that as one of our pillars, but we do have to check each other, too. I mean, we are stewards of a lot more than just money, you know? It's, it is the, the policies of our district, um, leadership, and so we do. We don't hold ourselves accountable. Who will? Sorry. Yeah, I, I just think that we do have to, you know, police each other and make sure that we're, you know.
On the spirit of the, of the policy.
That's fair. All right, so we, shall we move it to second reading? Sounds like it. All right, so the next one, five, uh, one twenty-five, is that right? Yeah.
Yep, this is also a policy that we looked at locally, uh, when we were having a conversation about use of the district's logos. Um, if you go to page two, um, item seven, there is a, uh, provision there about refrain from using the district's logos without permission and follow board policy. One of the things we talked about is, um, you know, those groups that are closest to the district and making sure that we're making them aware, uh, through policy, uh, such as our parent organizations and booster clubs. So the committee, through discussion, thought, you know, those would be groups that may, uh, use our logo or think to use our logo, and adding that to this policy, we did check with our attorneys, and they thought that was appropriate. Further than the policy that Dr. Hunt was referring to earlier, which was more of the procedures that go with the other policy.
The procedures apply to, uh, my only concern was that this one was in the personnel, what people think to go. This is the recommendation of our council, right?
They thought it was appropriate to put it here based on the recommendation from our local committee, like, the policy committee came up with that.
Yeah, so if you, I don't know if we've got eight ninety, we don't have eight ninety in the stack, but if you look at eight ninety, that is the one that specifically references use of the district logo and trademarks. So, um, you know, really, the, again, the spirit of that policy is that when we have organizations that are working in tandem with us and are trying to raise money and, and, you know, supporting our district, that we want to allow them the means to, to advertise that and to, you know, operate in a, in a means that benefits our district. So, you know, the, the spirit of eight ninety is that it gives, um, I'm sorry, I should have had, I should have asked.
Pulled it up here.
I got it.
I, I can, if there's any part you want me to read out of it, I'll do it here.
So it's, it, the spirit of it is to give parent organization and booster clubs a means by which to request use of the district logo. Um, so as Dr. Hunt mentioned, we had this procedure in place, but it, it wasn't a good procedure. It really was not well managed. That's not, I'm not pointing fingers. I, I think, it's just something that, you know, gets put in place, and it is what it is. So the way that this has been working is that really anyone could just fill out this Google Doc and say, hey, I want to use the district logo, and it was immediately granted. There was no review. And so, you know, people would ask and receive permission, and then it was granted, and then that's, you know, okay, then go on. Um, you know, what the, the problem is, and you know I can't help it because this is my, this is my sweet spot, but the problem is, so, trademarks don't, um, they're, they're not for, like, my benefit. Like, if I own water blue, Waterloo, this isn't like just, oh, I, I get to own Waterloo and I'm going to sell this. I have to, I have to police this so that other people don't sell Waterloo, but really it's like alcohol, and someone accidentally buys it, and then they get drunk off Waterloo, and, you know, then I could lose my trademark. That's, trademark law is to protect the consumer, not the owner of the trademark. And so, you know, to own a trademark, and you don't have to federally register it, I know that we're working on that, but you don't have to federally register it. You have trademark rights just by creating a logo or a word or something and selling something in conjunction with it, just like Erin has copyrights just by writing that article. Like, she owns that just by the mere creation of it. So, but the, the problem is, if people start to infringe it, then you lose those rights, and it causes consumer confusion. That's the, the standard. So, you know, it does, and I am so sorry, I know this is such a uncomfortable conversation, but I mean, we, like, we should be able to talk about this. So Barry and Leah asked for permission to use the logo, and it was granted. And, but it, it was a mistake, I think, by the, I mean, I don't think that if, if we reversed it three months, like, it would happen again, but it happened. And so the remedy that our council has advised is to let everyone now running for office use the logo, and that's not right. It's just, it, it creates the presumption that there is some sort of sponsorship. And you, I mean, you understand, it's not.
I didn't hear that that was the remedy, though. Was that the remedy?
No.
Okay, I'm, I'm confused, because that's not what I heard you say earlier.
Well, okay, so that gets to a second policy that we had to talk about as far as use of district property for political purposes, which also is non here because we didn't make any changes, but that's how the district has to approach. Okay, so the remedy is the three things that Dr. Hunt, um, noted. So we changed the procedure. So now this won't happen again. But in the interim, if any political candidates ask to use the logo, we had to say yes, because otherwise we're guilty of.
Favoritism.
Yeah, right? So, and then it's, it's confusing. So, you know, that was issue number one. I don't remember what you said issue number two was for the remedy, and the third was.
Policy and trademark.
Policy, okay, and then the trademark. So we have, we have a fix going forward, but, you know, we have this division in our community, you know, and it is, like, a lot of, like, you're doing that, you're doing that, and so, you know, I, I, you know, we talked about that. I called you a couple of months ago, or a month ago or so, and was like, I think that, you know, Barry and Leah may be using the logo. I don't think that it's appropriate, and, you know, we kind of talked about it, and, and, you know, it's, it's uncomfortable because, you know, you put money into making those signs, and you put money into those flyers and all of that, but there has to be, in my opinion, a remedy, because unfortunately, and without intention, you're breaking a policy. And I know you don't want to. I mean, I know that's not your intention.
We're not professional candidates. We're just out there trying to do the best we can, and this was, you know, inadvertent, uh, thing that came up that, you know, I didn't, I don't think anybody realized it was going to become, you know, as, as big an issue as it is. I, I don't think anyone was looking to, I mean, looking for a competitive advantage. I mean, I assumed everybody could have used the logo if they wanted to. It wasn't, you know, we're Barrington candidates, and we're going to honor our Barrington bona fides.
We have, I think the practice has been to allow the use. I mean, I, we haven't been policing it anywhere, right? I understand we've got, um, not just, um, the elections, but we've got, there's, there's other businesses that are using the logo. There's, um.
It's not the identical, so, like, we thought that this was kind of like a generic, um, you know, chess piece head, but it really is unique, and it was created for Barrington. It was drawn in, I don't know, in conjunction with Jeff Arnett and, I don't know, some other.
Actually, our graphic arts department, our students helped design our logo.
So the, the identical logo isn't being used by other companies. I mean, yeah, I'm, I'm sure that, like, you know, anything, like, you know, a filly or a horse or whatever, like, you know, it, it draws community spirit, but it's not that entire logo as a whole, like, like this, like the, the head and then the two twenty.
But there are, there are other places that are using.
Websites and things like that that have been, that's come up in question in the last year and a half, anywhere, two years, where we also didn't police, where people were.
But not so justified. You can see how it's a conflict, and you can see how it could cause people to feel like that perhaps the district is endorsing candidates who use, you could see how it could be a conflict.
Yeah, and it's been used by other groups and things like that, too, not just candidates, to show, again, to, if, if, I don't want to, I wasn't there, I don't, you know, if that, it could also cause confusion.
We're telling you two policies here, because there is a policy saying that you cannot use district property for politics.
For political purposes.
For political purposes. So that's a second policy.
Resources, yeah.
So that's the point. There's, there's separate, you're, you're, that's a different example. There is a policy that says you may not use district resources for political purposes. We have that. I think it says district property. I mean, we could, because we looked at, we looked at three.
It might say both.
It's both.
All right.
Yeah.
So I, I think that, um, are we all agreeable to the change that's in the policy right now that we just, that we're supposed to talk about tonight?
Yeah, I mean, I think that was a good cross-reference, just to clear things up, but, you know, I, I don't know what the remedy is, but I can tell you that it, like, it doesn't feel right to me. Like, you know, and I, I'm sure you guys understand, like, to, to know that.
Just to be clear, a lot of things about this election don't feel right to me either, so, um, you know, I would like to stay on point with the policy.
All right, so.
Leah, I'm not talking about politics. I'm talking about following the policies that we took an oath to uphold as a board member. You're currently violating one.
It just, I mean, that's the truth.
I think we asked for permission, and we were granted permission to use the logo, and that's what happened. We asked permission, and the district said yes. And maybe that wasn't the right decision on the district's part, but that's what happened, and so we should go forward and reevaluate what the policy is and how to do it in the future.
What I heard earlier was that the remedy was going to be, we weren't going to allow this going forward.
Yeah, we did remedy it, and, and it is remedied going forward, but I think you could be a little more contrite about this. I mean, like, it is okay to say, dang it, I wish we wouldn't have done that. I didn't realize it at the time. Thanks for telling me. You know what? That's a good point.
That's kind of like, like we said a month ago, when it was brought to our attention. I mean, now we're doing this as a policy, but.
My comment is not directed towards you, Barry.
No, I'm just saying.
I know, and I, I.
We talked about this a month ago, and, and said, oh, gosh.
And I appreciate that. I do.
Angela, can I ask, may I ask a clarifying question? With respect to this, the spirit of this policy, if I'm understanding it correctly, is to the betterment of the district and utilization of the logo. Is that a fair way of putting it?
Yeah.
But the point of, you know, calling this out is that, you know, to be objective, using the logo for your own personal use is not benefiting the district in a direct way. Is that kind of the talk here?
Yeah, but it's not like that, like, this wasn't a malicious thing. It wasn't like, you know, I'm going to call my law firm, the Barrington two twenty law firm, but it's, it's just that it, it creates a, the standard is of trademark infringement is the likelihood of consumer confusion, and it's confusing. So that, that was the, that's the intention of the law, that's the intention of the policy, and, you know, that will be the procedure that we follow in the future. So there is a remedy going forward.
But is your, is your, is your point, though, that there's no remedy in the here and now?
There's just no remedy right now.
And I guess, let me ask you this. In the professional world, if this were, you know, brought forth to Waterloo, for example, what would a typical resolution be?
Well, you would have to, like, like, either cover the logo in this situation, or if I were Waterloo and someone was selling Waterloo products and kids were getting drunk off of it, my trademark would be canceled. I'd lose it.
Well, I mean, if, if we want to go back in history, just to talk about remedies, Barrington's, the football team's original logo was the Denver Broncos, and we got in trouble with the Broncos. The remedy was, you have a year to change your logo. I mean, I mean, you know, we, we didn't have to cover it up or do anything like that, and, you know, the Broncos have said, well, we'll look the other way for another year, but by next year, we need a new logo, you know? So, I mean, you know, we, we just have to be, I, I, I guess the penalty has to fit the crime, you know? This was an inadvertent, uh. This was an inadvertent, and so from here on, we now know that there's a better way to do things. And, you know, I just don't want to, you know.
Well, yeah, and I agree with you, Barry.
Overdo it.
I agree with you.
And I work with.
In the future, we'll do this differently.
Infringers, you know, as well. And when it's, you know, it's just, the interesting thing in this situation is that it's just such a finite time. So then the remedy has to be expedited. So I could go, I could tell you something. Because like when I used to work in the cell phone industry, like there was an infringement. And like if cell phones only had a six-month life, like they did back in the 90s, then the remedy had to be immediate because there really was no remedy. You know, they would just sell the rest of their stock and then launch a new phone that was called a Spirit or whatever, you know?
Well, another remedy could be, I'll throw this out there for consideration too, is that, you know, our next conversation is about Framework 220, right? This logo came about, I think, from the strategic plan that was started 10, 12 years ago. So maybe it's time for us to refresh and, and pick something new for, out of Framework 220. Because we're starting a new strategic plan and get the students.
I like it.
But I mean, it's, I mean, it's not something we've had around for the, you know, for the however long this district has existed. It's really only been around the last few years. So with the last strategic plan. So maybe that's another thing we could talk about with Framework 220. And that would kind of solve it for, and give an opportunity for the students again to come and design something new. And, and we can move forward.
But I guess the point is there's no relief for those who are affected, right? Whether it's the district, whether it's the other candidates, there's no relief.
Well, I think that the relief was that I think everyone was just granted access if they wanted it.
Right. So if the other candidates wanted to use the chess piece now, they could for this cycle, but not in the future.
So then they have to buy new signs.
Well, on the website, it's very easy to add something to your website if you care to do that. I mean, on your, you know, your Facebook posts, I mean, they have access if they want to.
Yeah, I agree. I don't think it sits well with me either.
So we have a great discussion coming up on Framework 220. So are we okay to move forward with the, the changes to, I'm going to, I'm going to move my cursor, to policy five, 125 as well on personal technology.
Is there more to it than just?
It's just that one addition to reference.
It doesn't change anything.
Okay.
Just a cross, the, the third pillar and, and remedies that were to take place. So we're okay with moving that forward?
Yes.
All right. So let's move to our Framework 220 discussion. We've had a memo now for several weeks. And I think we're going to hear a presentation from Dr. Hunt and team.
I think more, more in team. I just, you know, to maybe go backwards. The district spent about a year and a half now engaging over 4,000 people in a process to kind of define what the future of Barrington 220 will look like. We kind of landed on some priorities last year, got board feedback, made changes. Design teams have worked throughout the fall to clarify objectives. Many of the people seated here today led those design teams, served on those design teams. I just want to thank everyone for their contributions and their efforts. And tonight, board, it's, it's really your opportunity to give feedback and guidance into, you know, timeframe and priorities. And if you read all of this, the biggest mistake you could make is say, well, let's do it all right now. It's, you know, that's not possible.
Come on, why not? Why not?
So really, I think, I think what the executive council has wrestled with, with the design teams is what should go first? And you're a big part of the voice of what, what should go first. So I'm going to turn over to Dr. Winkelman, who's going to lead us through this. And just appreciate everyone's support and work and input into this.
So, you know, I think our purpose, as Sandra said at the beginning of the meeting, is to sit around and have a conversation and a dialogue rather than just marching through slides. Because for the past several months, we've been putting together objectives related to the six priority areas. And there's nearly 30 objectives. So that would take a long time just to march through them. So rather than that, you know, we prepared the materials for the board a few weeks ago so that you would have time to read and digest. And what we're looking for tonight, as Dr. Hunt mentioned, is some direction for administrative team as we kind of close out the community engagement and designing our strategic plan with the intent of in June, then shifting to implementation. So tonight is another opportunity for the board to give us additional direction, give us a couple of months to work on that and then put together a plan. You know, three questions to start the, the discussion and dialogue this evening. We're curious, you know, as you read through the objectives connected to the priority areas, were there things that resonated with you and that you're excited about for us to begin? As Dr. Hunt mentioned, we can't do it all at once. So we are going to have to timeline some of this. And some things naturally need to occur before we can maybe move on to another objective. So there's a little bit of that at play. But, you know, I think we've, we've heard one of our priority areas and the related objective is around full day kindergarten. So I think we've heard that's one that we're planning on starting, you know, immediately, right? But there's probably others that, well, we're curious to know if there's things that you see that you'd like to give us some direction on, making sure that those things get pulled forward sooner. And then, you know, another thing that we were able to, I think, accomplish with the last strategic plan, there was times that we needed to go outside of our teachers and our staff and our administrative team and engage our community, you know, to help us accomplish these different priority areas. And so, you know, one example, there's several objectives within health and wellbeing. And we started to do some partnerships this year with Advocate Good Shepherd Hospital and some mindfulness and some different things that were supports for our staff, right? So we, we have local community resources. And we're curious to know where you maybe see opportunities for the school district to partner and engage with our community around some of these objectives and priority areas. So those are the three things that we found would be important for us to start our conversation this evening. So I'll open it up to the discussion.
So I would love to just piggyback off of that health and wellness discussion. So Katie and I are on the Safety and Security Committee. And we talked a lot about how safety and security, I think we mentioned this at one of the last board meetings, is more than just like, you know, keeping our, you know, our, our actual physical structures safe, you know, mind, body, spirit, wellness. And, you know, we talked about what we see is really one of the biggest hurdles to children's wellness. And, and I think that there is a lot of, you know, research and things that we kind of expected as, you know, social media was rolling out and cell phone usage was increasing. But now we're really seeing like tangible issues with children and their health and wellness. And so we talked about a couple of things. Number one, maybe partnering with groups that look at, you know, putting your cell phone down. So Yale is actually involved in this really great study right now that a few local high schools are engaged in where they partner with Gab Wireless. I'm sure there's a ton of wireless companies, but they will supply flip phones to children that want to get, like, to put down their phone for a day.
Does it have a rotary dial?
I think there's a court. But, you know, just different options to, to, you know, promote mindfulness, as Craig mentioned, but also, you know, actually removing the object from your hand for X hours a day. Or you could participate by deleting certain apps. Or you could participate by just, you know, keeping a journal as far as how many times you're checking your phone. But the study is really gaining momentum. And I think it would be such a great thing if District 220 could kind of grab a hold of this and, and be leaders in this work as well. And, you know, even if it doesn't create some huge change in the way that our children utilize social media and things like that, I think it's the, you have to be separated from it for a little bit to actually make the connection of how much you're controlled by it. And I think it would be such a great proactive step for us to, to look into. And then also, we talked a little bit about, you know, drug overdose and, you know, the prevalence of fentanyl and, and issues like that. And, you know, we've lost a couple of graduates to, you know, these unintentional overdoses. And, and to have speakers come in to discuss the, the dangers of fentanyl and, and how you can't know if what you're ingesting is, is laced with this highly lethal substance. So just really working on those partnerships going forward and making that a priority and, and something that, you know, our kids can get excited about and, and, you know, really embrace as, as kind of the next step as they go into their career in college readiness.
They fit right in with the objectives that, that are here as well. And maybe, I mean, I don't want to say today it's fentanyl, tomorrow it could be something else. But just be aware, you know, increased awareness.
Sticking with health and wellbeing for over there, I, I think objective two, I would love to see that happen as soon as possible. I think, I've heard from, we've heard from countless parents that the transitions between grade school and middle school and middle school, high school are where kids struggle. And I would love to start working on that one as soon as possible.
I agree with you. We've heard it over and over. And it's, and it's something that shouldn't be that hard for us. We should have opportunities. It shouldn't cost money.
Money is time.
Well, it's both. It's, it's both. But it's, I think there's a lot of ideas out there.
It's timely and we just had this at PTO President's Council a week or, a week or so ago that this was a topic that they thought was something that should pull forward.
Also, on the SEL, which I think is great, I think just, I, I, I think more, any, as much transparency and communication we can give to parents on this topic, the more, the better.
On what we're doing and, yeah.
Yes. I, I think there's still questions around it. Parents still have, hesitate to do surveys. They hesitate, we're all, you know, I think just as much information we can, because I think it's important. And I think it's some parents, it's being blocked in some cases because people are mistrustful of what's being taught.
So we had improvement in communications is also a lot of that.
Yeah, we could tie this into a couple places.
There's a whole section on, on communications as well. I would agree with those, Katie. I had one, I had another one for health. If nobody, I don't know what order you're trying to go in. But I had another one for health and wellbeing that, you know, we've got great athletics here. Not all of them are able to be no cut, but have we thought about like intramurals? You know, to be able to have more kids that want to participate in baseball or softball. Because, you know, maybe we could expand in those areas. So we can make some no-cut activities in, in those regards. I also had social media, which we already talked about. And then we used to have, not that, not that we always have to do what we used to do, but adult education, you know, education for the whole community.
Just say adult.
Adult, yeah. You know, I, we used to have different classes, especially now we're going to have a new high school and, and some new areas to showcase. What might we be able to do in the area of having the community participate and use those facilities as well?
I have a lot of people interested in the new green, the renovated greenhouse, culinary areas. Even, even students who don't have enough elective space to take like Intro to Culinary Arts are like, it smells so good. I wouldn't go with it. I want to try it. But they might, might be too full in their classes. Maybe they would have a chance too if there was something extra.
And the kitchen's going to move, right? So to be more prominent.
Well, and this would actually be a good way to bring local businesses in to help facilitate programming that maybe adults and students could take part in and then tie in local businesses also.
Burn just perked up over there.
We could just bring the whole community together.
Some of that work with our advisory councils as it relates to career pathways. And so we are looking forward to continuing that.
One thing I had, I'd been thinking about around just hiring practices and how that works with embracing diversity. And I was so excited to hear that too. So you were interested in talent acquisition and focusing more on that as well. And, and I think you were talking, we had been talking about like a grow your own program so we can keep track of our own graduates and those who are interested in teaching because they're already invested, right, in 220? And it's like, yeah, go, go and learn and grow and come back, right? And I think, I think that's awesome. I'm wondering, what would it look like if we held, you know, a job fair here so that people could come into our buildings and kind of get a little bit of an experience of what that's like as we're kind of, as we're, as we're thinking about that? And, you know, what does it mean to, to recruit and mirror our student demographics like we're talking about at all levels, right? That from, from educators to administrators to tech specialists, library specialists. And I love that work that we're starting to do. And I think with developing partnerships in colleges, I wonder if we can have, if we can be more intentional when we know about openings? Like sometimes we know two or three years ahead of time, oh, there's this position that's going to be open in two years. And then we kind of connect that with the grow your own. We kind of keep track as if we start those relationships early, we might see a person that would be a great fit for our district, but not have a position at the time. And then, you know, we know two years, we have somebody who's retiring and that other person would be a great fit. I think I would love to work on that. Really happy to see early childhood and kindergarten. We've talked a lot about the benefits of all-day kindergarten as well. One comment I wanted to make too with the program transitions, I agree with everyone that it's extremely important. I wonder if we could make sure we're intentional about customizing those transitions too? Because an experience from, say, countryside to prairie or station would be different from Sunny Hill to prairie or station. We know those demographics change from, I think, something like 86% Latino at Sunny Hill and a very kind of neighborhood-y feel to one where geographically you're much farther, right? So that's a physical transition. The demographics are a transition. Maybe hearing Spanish and English equally, that's a transition. So that could be, that could be a little bit more intense, right, for a student from Sunny Hill? And then there's a student from another elementary might have a different experience and, and other needs as well. Same with, with middle school to high school. So I'm really glad that we're focusing on that. And I agree that it should be a priority. So those are three things that really stood out.
I really like what everybody's saying. I'm almost afraid, how many objectives are you up to now? Because I think I have two in addition, but I don't want to overload you either. I think I could certainly live. Well, I mean, I really like objective four under readiness, the life skill development. And frankly, I think that actually kind of goes a little while with objective three as well. I think I like those together. Because one of the key things that we've talked about here is, you know, making sure that our students are ready, whether it's secondary, co-secondary education, or it's getting a job, or it's apprenticeship. You know, I think it's important that we train them well. And so I really like those. And then one that we've already touched on, but I wanted to again emphasize is objective five under personalized learning. You know, we, you know, so thank you again, administrators, for doing the research for us. But having shown us, you know, what the neighboring districts offer with regards to kindergarten options and opportunities, I do think it would behoove us to put, you know, a laser focus on getting that situation, you know, up to, you know, up to par as soon as possible. And knowing that it's going to be a difficult, you know, lift, you know, I would argue that we should put more focus there just to make sure that you guys have adequate time. And, you know, I don't want to put timelines on this, but getting this, you know, like I said, off the ground, obviously not before the next school year, but hopefully before the next, next school year if possible. But yeah, I agree with what everybody else said.
We're all aligned there, yeah.
Yeah, I agree with what everybody else said. I love what we're pouring out here. There's just too much, like you said.
I guess to piggyback on one of the ones you commented on, I think was the future readiness, the career pathways and life skill. You know, one of the things that I, as a parent, found somewhat difficult is you, you, if you're planning to go to university, there's really not a lot of room in your schedule. We have great offerings, but you, you know, you can only take a few, right? So more exploratory, you know, opportunities for students to see a lot of different things. Whether, I don't know if that means a class or in fairs or, or what, but just more opportunities for students to get access to different, different things. And I think that some of that was addressed, you know, in some of your ideas last time, but even last meeting. But just, just the more they can see, the more they can touch and. J-term, maybe?
Yeah, it's like you break up the year.
Yeah.
Throughout the traditional schedule. It's interesting. Might be something. That's a research, yeah. That's a research.
Could be a J-term or a June term or, you know, I don't know. Maybe, I don't know. Just more, more opportunities. Maybe that, maybe that is a, J-term is more January, right? But, but maybe it, maybe there is some more summer school. I mean, summer school in high school is about getting credits. And, I mean, we, we do have camps and things like that, but maybe there's more we could do there. So they can explore more like you can in high, like in middle school and in elementary school. Kind of making the sausage here.
Yeah, but I think that's, because, you know, we see all of our kids get in their group and they kind of have their head down and then they don't realize that, oh.
But I had all of my classes already planned for next year, but yeah, like that little exploratory kind of mini-class, I think is.
There's like too many options and not enough time.
Yeah, not enough time, yeah.
Well, and not to be a downer on this one though, but I have heard, I've had experience myself and from a lot of parents, that I love all those ideas, but parents are also worried we're not preparing students to, for real-world expectations when they go into a job, like you have to get your, you have to do your work on time, you have to finish it, you have to, if you mess up, there are consequences if you, I mean, I know we were coming out of a difficult time, so there were concessions made, but, you know, if my daughter doesn't turn in her assignment, she gets a week to still turn it, you know, and that's not what happens when you get a job. So I do, I think that if we could, along with life skills, perhaps prepare them for the realities of meeting expectations.
Like emphasize executive function, that kind of thing, like.
I'm not saying go fail everyone, I'm just saying. Reality. Fail early, fail often. Get it out of the way.
That's a great point though, this is the time for them to.
Try things out.
To try things out, and failure's not always.
To your point, I think there can be some real intentionality behind the work that we do within the life skills, and then the personal success skills too, that overlap between the future readiness and the personalized learning.
Kind of piggybacking on that, I, I like that we're talking about the, the future readiness, the, you know, is, is it going to be, you know, life skill development and also career pathways and authentic learning? I think that there might be more information to be gleaned from the community about, about those things. I know we, we had like the big picture items of what the community was interested in early on and gathering information from the community, but I think it might be important to reach back out to students and families and say, you know, what life skills do you think you really need? Like, and circle back and double-check we're tapping the right things, and how do you see these career pathways or this, you know, life success? Kind of, how do you picture that, and maybe get a little more information from the people that will be participating? I know our, our graduating seniors are a good group that we got information from last year for some of this. Those were my thoughts, because you know, the third question was community engagement, so I kind of circled back and thought, which ones do we maybe not know all the answers, and those are the ones that bubbled to me, so. And I also think, and I'm, and this could be just talking to more people, flexible learning. I don't know that our community understands what that is, is a little bit of feedback I've had. So to, to be able to explain that better, and I know you had a whole presentation about it, and I understand it, but I've seen some of the spaces and, and seen some of the examples and had students go through it, but if you haven't, it's still a hard concept to understand, I think, I don't know what the other board members think about that. And I apologize, I don't have much of a voice tonight, I'm trying.
Oh, good, good input.
So, so my kind of vision, but by the way, first I have to say, you know, when you said what resonates with you, and I felt like I was like at a candy store, like which candy bag, because they all are so good, I didn't know which one to, you know, to pick first. But I just want to, and, and some of this you're doing, so I'm not critical or anything, but I saw places in, on these, this package here, where we can kind of get the community more involved, so I just wanted to point out a couple places. So, under health and safety, social media awareness, I think our parents want to know, how can they be involved? How can they watch their kids? How can they know what their kids are doing and, and, and set the appropriate limits? And so I just want to make sure that we're not just teaching our kids, but teaching our parents how to, not how to parent, but how to, how to be successful in that. And then under, even though we have it under community partnerships, I want to point out that seventy percent of the households in Barrington don't have students, so I want to challenge you to make sure, how do we get to those people also? Yes, the parents of the students, it's very important that they're involved, but the seventy percent, a lot of people I've talked to over the last, you know, couple weeks, who don't have kids in the schools, don't know what's, what's going on in the schools. And, you know, I mentioned to one of them about the fiddler on the roof, oh really, they had to play, and, you know, so, so how can we get the seventy percent of people who don't have kids in the schools, and that includes young families whose kids are going to be in the schools? You know, let them know what's happening and how they can interact, and, and then the third place I had was under, which, which I think we're starting to do with Nate Rouse, under the inclusivity discussion. Parents want to know, how is DEI affecting our students? How is DEI affecting me? What should, what could I be doing? Give me more education, give me more information. It's not that we have to change who we are or what we're doing, but a lot of parents are really begging to be more involved, and I, I think it's being rolled out to the fam, you know, to the families, but just make sure that we keep our eyes that, you know, we're, yes, we're teaching our administrators, and yes, we're now rolling it out to the teachers, but the families want to be involved too, and so I, I add that as, you know, three places where we can involve our community, and then, and then I just.
Can you back off of that before you go on?
Yes, go ahead.
I think to your, I approach the same thing, and I think currently, as we've discussed, the meetings are closed, but we are embedding DEI into throughout our entire education system and through all our schools, and I think to various, we do need to start involving parents and community members and stuff into those committee meetings, or separate, whatever you want to do, and making it an open process, because it is an important initiative, and I feel like people want to get involved and they have questions.
Or even separate focus groups for, you know, each school.
Each school, I thought we were opening.
Have Nate or one of his people who he's trained go to each school and say, let's, you know, let's meet with a PTO, whatever. I, I mean, I don't want to micromanage that.
There are equity teams at each school that are working.
That's what I thought.
But through the, you know, with the parents more, I think some parents just feel left out, and, you know, so.
I think the PTOs have a mission too.
Not as a criticism, more just let's be aware of that.
Yeah.
And then, and then for me, since I am on the facilities committee, I, I really want to make sure, and I know Bob started this, that we're looking at how we can use our monies to plan for the future, not just a referendum, but keeping the schools up, you know, our, our community's investment in the schools, how we can make sure that we are good stewards of, of the schools, and making sure that we are giving enough financial foresight for the future, and not kind of cutting that off when we're looking at budget cuts. So, you know, as someone who's on the facilities committee, I just want to make sure that, you know, our priority is to develop and maintain and, and the infrastructure, both for present and future needs, so I, I put a big, you know, plug in, I mean, I'm, I definitely want to find art center, and that's going to be a big lift, but, but just what we have right now, I want to make sure we take good care of it, so.
I think that's a really good point, Greg, because we were, we were putting that referendum through last time. I remember we had things like AC units and like roof replacements and things like that, and one of the biggest pushbacks I heard was, well, why didn't you plan, we, you know, I own a home, I know I'm going to have to replace my air conditioning every X number of years, why didn't you plan for that? And our response was, while we tried to go to the community, which they asked, but I, I understood that point of view, you know, from the community as well, like, but you kind of know you have to replace your AC, and, and I think that while it was, you know, like in the necessity column of the referendum, which made it feel like this is a need, not a want, it, it did, like, sometimes that resonates with people, but other times they're like, why aren't you just, you know, kind of.
Planning ahead.
Yeah.
And I think it goes back to the communication piece too, because we've got to communicate that that's how we've been operating, and we haven't been, you know, setting aside monies for that, we, you know.
But it makes sense.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, it is how you run your own home, so.
Well, I think that our finance department has got a document now, and they're tracking, like, how old are the furnaces? How old are the, you know, all the major appliances, that's not the right word, the major things that you need in your buildings, right? Creating your air conditioning, roofs, your pavement, like the time cycle of their lifestyle.
And what is it going to cost to keep these up though? I mean, that's the next step.
That's the next step.
Board, I'd also just remind you that most people are not currently saving for their next dishwasher replacement. You're really not. What you're doing is, when your dishwasher fails, you're like, okay, now I'm going to replace it, and either you, you charge it on your credit card and pay it off, or you, you figure it out at, at the time, and there is a philosophical approach about who pays for that replacement, so when we replace a roof, not a dishwasher, but when we look at the school district, putting a million-dollar roof on, and who pays for it? So do we tax in advance and bank the money, and then someone who maybe has been paying for twenty years and then moves away? And we didn't put the roof on, but we do it the summer after they move away. They've paid for it for twenty years, they never got the benefit of the roof. Or do we, do we ask our taxpayers, would you be willing to support the replacement of the roof? And taxpayers say yes, then we put the roof on, and then we repay that, and we collect taxes from, through the referendum in order to repay that. So when someone lives here, if they live here for one year after the roof goes on, they paid for one year of a roof they actually got, then they moved away, and the new homeowner there now continues to pay for that. So there's a philosophical question, and I think our board historically has gone on the, hey, we'll do those big asks, and then people who are benefiting from the approval actually then are paying for it as we roll forward. You know, hey, there's different ways that you can do it, but, but Angela, I just wanted to also just provide that perspective as folks are thinking about that, and it is a complicated issue, and I am very much motivated to get a comprehensive list of all of our appliances for you, and, and painting schedules, and roof replacements, and boiler replacements laid out, so that you and our administrators and our community have a good long-term view of what's coming. Because even though we did a referendum, we didn't replace everything that's going to need to be replaced in the next twenty years, and we want to be able to provide that, that financial plan for you to understand. I'm really behind this objective that we've got on here, I really believe this is important for us.
Well, Dr. Byrne, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm sorry Sandra, well, I was just going to comment, yeah, I agree with what Leah said, because we did talk about that during the finance committee, but I thought the, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I was under the impression that the objective of putting that schedule together where we have all our various fixed assets with the life, with depreciation, well, not necessarily depreciation, but the useful life remaining, et cetera, the broader objective was so that we could factor that into our budgets. And potentially referendum too, but factor into our budget and say, you know what, we know this is going to come up in the next budget, so this is where we need to fit it in, and then this is where we need to make, you know, other areas where we need to make adjustments in order to meet that need.
Yes, that's exactly, and I, maybe I didn't say that part of it explicitly, but that was what, what was implicit in, in me saying, I think that's important for us to understand, because there are these needs over the next twenty years. We absolutely need to be planning for that and expecting that, and knowing what's coming. But I will also tell you that, that our B and G team does a fantastic job at maintaining our facilities, and we actually get, in many cases, more than what is the projected useful life, and we always continue to do that. But just like people do at home, you know, when your washing machine breaks, you, you look at, what's the cost of the replacement versus the repair and the functionality, all that stuff, so we also make those decisions as we go, because there's no point in throwing good money into something that's going to be wasted. But we do a great job in B and G, I'm very proud of our team at keeping things going as long as possible, so we get good value out of it for our taxpayers.
As, as someone on the finance, on the facilities committee, I second that, I agree, I'm very impressed with the building and grounds committee, they really do good work.
I'll say you guys got to me, I marked it as a priority too.
A lot of facilities, I don't want to forget that there were things that we wanted to do at the high school that we weren't able to do to get our maker space there, and I still think that's, that's a priority too, and I, and I'll mention the fine arts center, and the fine arts center even, what we have today isn't just used by the fine arts department, it's used, you know, educationally across the entire high school and community, so I don't want us to forget that either.
Sandra, that, you know, sometimes we think of, of the arts program and the work that we're doing right now over, over the first half of this year, as being about just performing arts and just the auditorium. And, and Board, I want to remind you, that's not what it's only about, it, it's actually a bigger project, and assessing what are the other aspects of the arts programs that we have at, in district, at the high school, and how do they fit together and what are the synergies, in addition to, just as you said Sandra, how else are they being used, some of these facilities? And while certain areas might only be used by the arts, things like the auditorium are used for a variety of other things. So that project is, is bigger than just performing arts, and so just wanted to remind you of that, I think it's really important. As we bring recommendations later this year, you may see things like, oh wait, this isn't just redoing seating in the auditorium? No, that's, that's not, that's part of it perhaps, but there's more to it.
So a lot of it comes back to communication too, that's certainly more to a point.
I mean, now just make, what I recall from what we heard from those that are running the, that auditorium, three hundred and sixty-three days a year it's utilized by more than, you know, more than one group on a given day sometimes, so it's got a lot of utilization, and it's not all fine arts, and it also is community, right? There's a lot of community involvement too, so I'll emphasize again the partnerships maybe that we could establish to help us bring that, bring that tuition, and maybe even the maker space at the high school too, and some of the things that we weren't able to get done yet. And, and that indoor, you know, where we're going to swap, was it physics and?
Multi-purpose indoor, you know.
Yeah, we were going to swap two areas, right, so where physics is today, we're going to move and, and create that maker space, so I don't want us to forget about those things too, but I, Leah, I didn't, I don't want you to miss what you were going to comment on as well.
I was just agreeing about the fine arts, the performing arts center, and also to comment that it's an educational space, that it would be a space where an entire class could, could meet in the high school, or an entire department, which we don't have the space for right now, so yeah, I was just agreeing with you, so yeah.
You know, one more thing before I forget this, Dr. Winkelman, one thing that I really liked, and assuming it doesn't need to be a priority, but it's, because I think it actually weaves through everything, but on the external communication, objective one, under community partnerships and communication, I can't help you how much I love, love, love the idea of external analytics and showing us.
Oh yeah, that would come from you, wouldn't it?
It would, but I think it's important to show data and, you know, support what we're doing, and I think that's going to help our community so much better in understanding, you know, the why.
I don't think we've talked about inclusive education very much, and being on the equity committee, I was like, okay, like all of them, I like them all, and I want them all to start now, but that's not realistic. So I just think that it's really important that the second objective, embracing diversity, that we get stakeholder input from diverse backgrounds and, and help make everyone feel included and cared about. I think that's the starting point, that we need to make sure that we have in our culture and in our school district to include everyone and make students feel included and, and cared for. I also think that the first objective, the accessibility, to provide all students access to academic and co-curricular programs and experiences, pre-kindergarten through post-high school, transition while reviewing barriers to participation, allow students personal choice in their involvement in extracurriculars, I think that accessibility piece is really, really important, and the sooner the better for that, you know, and Erin already hit on hiring, and I think it all goes hand in hand with professional development, some of the things that are starting already, so thank you for the work that's going, and I'm excited for the future work.
Yeah, and we're seeing this, I, I would encourage us to continue to look at the interdisciplinary aspect of this, like when I look about, when I see embracing diversity, I also think about safe environment, and how is that integrated into social emotional learning? I mean, countryside last week had neurodiversity spirit week, which was really cool, and, and every day was something different to celebrate neurodiversity, and so, so we're celebrating, you know, different backgrounds, right? Race, neurodiversity, socioeconomics, and I think I've heard from some families that maybe bullying has been an issue too, and I think that integrated with SEL, integrated with how do we celebrate each other? I think Principal Kirk maybe was working with Nate and some others to have these talks at Rousland about like words and how words matter, and, you know, planting a kindness garden or something like that, and I'd encourage us to see like how, what are we doing in all of our schools? I think that there are some probably more recurring SEL-type lessons around words and, and why they matter, but I'm wondering, is, you know, is the kind of talk they gave, could it be kind of fine-tuned or customized to different grade levels or different schools, you know, periodically, whether it's quarterly, or just to kind of reinforce the culture that we want to create of celebrating each other and accepting each other, so.
Maybe a process too to, to evaluate and find those best practices and get them applied across, across the district. What else? I had two other things that I didn't, I wrote down, I didn't say yet. And maybe I kind of said it, but I wrote down independent study, again, I think I was thinking about the high school, you know. I know those opportunities do exist, but if somebody did want to go deep dive on underwater basket weaving, you know, continue to, to make those opportunities available, even if it's in an independent study or.
J-term or whatever.
Or J-term or whatever, that was one thing I wrote down. Another thing I wrote down was, this is kind of one thing I heard about at the large. Another thing I wrote down was, this is kind of, one thing I heard about at the large district meeting last week was, in Wheeling, they opened a new admin center this, this year. I don't know if anybody heard about this or not. I read a little bit about it today, so I could be a little bit more refreshed, but they opened their admin center and in it they also included a, a large percentage of square footage where the YMCA comes in, where they've got immunization available for students and other wellness activities. I'm not sure that that's exactly what our community needs, but I'm, I'm thinking about, what are we missing? You know, what are, what are we not providing today to our, our students in our community that, and it's a, it's a community center, it's not just for the students. So it just opened my mind, hmm, is there anything that we could be doing different?
Really new partnerships are going on?
Yeah. Yeah, so is there something else that we could be thinking about or partnering with others, other bodies to, to make sure we're addressing, addressing those needs?
I just wondered, with seven voices and seven different priorities, if it really helps you, or if it's just...
I'm more like 25.
I've heard similarities along the way. We did brief as a, as a team to try to sort out what we heard tonight and then have that influence, you know, have a good timeline and how we're going to help this work, because it is all exciting to various point, right? It's like, we want to jump into all this right now, but we do need to go to the plan that we can implement and see measure progress and not start all of that.
Kudos to all your hard work, it's been great, this is really good, good work.
It's been a really nice process this year, working together, involving our teachers, our staff and our administrative team throughout the last several months to keep refining this plan to where I think we're not going to have it beyond track or really drive a lot of this decision. We brought up the outcomes just like we were with the last plan of all the changes we made.
I went through like every single grouping and made notes.
I did, too.
So, yeah, because there's just so much here that's so exciting. I don't want to keep us too late, I know everyone wants to have, have some time. But I really liked, under stewardship, make our spaces match our strategic plan. I thought that was really good. I don't, I don't know how that happens or what that involves, but I thought it was a really good one. And I also really like the global awareness of our students, and, and I, I had a few ideas about that. I don't know if this is something we might want to ask our community again, but it might be a missed opportunity. You know, I think our language programs are a global awareness opportunity that's fantastic. And I don't know if we have wait lists or if we would consider expanding or looking at the success rate of what we've done and how it works, but I think it's an opportunity of something we're already doing that wouldn't be that hard to expand if there's an interest.
Excellent.
Overall, Dr. Winkelman, here's what I'm thinking, and Board, let me know what you guys think, but to answer my third question, I almost feel like the best way of, you know, achieving actual community engagement would be to, after you guys debrief and figure out, you know, where you want to go with this, maybe bring it back to the community, whether it's, you know, a meeting here, a coffee session, like you said, and, and document. I think everything should actually be brought through the community and just, you know, see if there's any dissenting views and, you know, if, if so, how do we kind of talk through it? And, you know, I think that's the path in order for us to, you know, truly make this a, you know, district-wide and totally, you know, what else can you say, is inclusive process.
Be a committee of the whole topic, too. We have, we ask for input just on the ideas coming from here.
I think that community is going to be very important in a case that we didn't put a specific question out there, but we've talked about as a team of very intentionally getting our students' voice in this process.
Oh, yeah.
There are a lot of things in here that we need to have our students participate and help them understand what's going on in the different objective areas of that, to make sure we're talking about that, so that we're figuring out ways to get our, our students to...
You know what? I forgot, I forgot to put this in my report, but it was another thing that happened that was talked about at that large district meeting. Lori Grant, who we've met with before, she's not our rep anymore, but she talked about the pre-conference in November is going to have a student voice section on it, too. It's going to be very focused on student voice. So that sounded exciting to me, too. So I was going to follow, made myself a note, go talk to Lori again and find out more about that and say, yes, we want to hear that.
If we do committee of the whole around this, can we intentionally invite students who are maybe interested in sharing feedback?
Absolutely.
Olivia is amazing, but I mean, including Olivia, beyond Olivia, it would be great to hear from all levels.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Everyone who wants, anyone, everyone and anyone who wants to come, frankly.
Or have a student-oriented one where they might feel more comfortable talking with students, not us.
Or school, or, you know, a couple at the high school.
I mean, some students aren't, are totally comfortable talking with us, but not all of them.
I think that kind of leads us to what we're going to do next. So April, May, we're going to share this with the community and get that additional perspective with the hope of then breaking this into work for April and June, so then we can work over the summer months as a leadership team, really that's starting to be strategic about this.
Is your intention, we'll actually have a vote on it? I mean, are you going, like a motion or something, or?
I would prefer that the board, you know, vote and commit.
No, that's fair.
This is our plan, it's going to drive the work of the district and so forth.
I know, something came to mind after what Leah said, maybe a Google Doc then would be helpful, too, to, you know, kind of push out to students in the event that there is, you know...
That's a good point, just, just a, a vehicle, whatever it is, whatever that is, a vehicle for all community members to provide input to.
Yeah.
We've done that a lot in the past. Look at us, communicate, communicate, communicate.
Just say a non-survey.
Non-survey.
Yeah, non-survey.
Just say that, not survey.
You saw me kind of attempt to look over to Dr. Fola and Samantha, and I'm sure their ears are already turning on, how do we engage our students and collect things in a way that is, you know, meaningful for us to be able to collect and use, so they're really, they're both really good at that.
You can limit the words.
Yeah, for sure.
Call 250.
For sure.
Anything else from the team? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great discussion. Our next discussion item is to talk about our meeting on April 4th. We've got, we've got an action item to consider a, a young man to be student superintendent on the morning of April 6th, potentially voting on...
And get Tuesday to...
Yeah.
Good.
Voting on administrative compensation and exempt compensation as well, intended for that next meeting.